Hello, everybody. We still have a few minutes, so I'm gonna give a few more minutes before we actually start. I think I have like one more minute we have. So it's funny, I was meeting with the cookie group a few minutes ago and I said to them, well, it's a quarter to six, I gotta get off of here, I got another call. We gotta do this town hall meeting in about fifteen minutes. And when I looked at my calendar, it said six thirty, so I was gonna be way ahead of time. Okay, Ashley, if you wanna go ahead and start a PowerPoint, we can go ahead and get started. Okay, well, we're gonna go ahead and start our spring of town hall meeting tonight. And first of all, let me say thank you, you all very much for taking the time out of your busy schedule to meet with us. I am really enjoying these town hall meetings because I feel like I get a lot of good feedback with people that have them, that work hand in hand with those girls and do what we need to happen with the Girl Scouts of Southern Illinois on a daily basis. So I really, really appreciate each and every one of you and the work that you do. Those aren't mere words, you guys are truly the wind beneath my wings. I really appreciate that. We're gonna go ahead and start with our Girl Scout promise. You can put yourself on mute and I will say the promise. On my honor, I will try to serve God and my country, to help people at all times and to live by the Girl Scout law. Thank you. So the agenda tonight, an overview of our agenda tonight, we wanna talk about, we wanna talk about our financial review, as I promised I would keep you guys up to date with where we are with our finances. We also wanna talk about the cookie program. We wanna talk about cookie evaluations at our last town hall meeting. You know, we talked about cookies and you guys gave me your input about cookies. And we had a long discussion about the January sale and how you felt about that. So we wanna talk about cookies again tonight. And then we wanna talk about that wonderful Girl Scout Experience Fund, on how the task groups are working together to do what is best, doing what is in the best interest of our girls. And then we're gonna end up talking about Camp Torquay and some of the wonderful things that's going on out there. Next slide, Ashley. So how are we doing with our finances? Well, let me start by saying, we had, I wanna keep you up to date. So I wanna note that it was a lot of work and a lot of sacrifices to make sure our finances were where it needs to be. With working in the middle of a pandemic, I'm sure some of you have felt that in your organizations and businesses, yourself in the middle of a pending, a lot of uncertainties. And we found out that we wanted to make sure that our operational finances is balanced in the budget. So when the board is looking for that, they see a balanced budget with the operational budget. But we did have a decrease in our cookie sales. And as a result of a decrease in our cookie sales, oh well, I wanna be clear, we did very well with our cookie sales, but we didn't make our budget when it comes to our cookie sales. So we have come together and revised that budget and we have presented it to our finance committee. And the finance committee has approved that revised budget. And now it will be going to the Board of Directors. But just to give you a little bit about where we are, next slide, Ashley. Where we are, GS USA, you all know, recommends that we have six to nine months of reserves. And we all know that what we had to do to make that happen and to make sure that we are financially sound. I wanted to give you all the current, and we actually got these numbers fresh from the finance department today, where we are currently for our months of reserves. Now, we all know that a year and a half ago, a year ago, we were negative when it comes to reserves. But today, I can proudly say that we are at thirty-three months of reserves as of the end of April. Next slide, Ashley. So the Girl Scouts of Southern Illinois is committed to delivering the Girl Scout experience now and in the future. With that, I wanna go on into our cookies. Our cookie program and our cookie evaluations, as I stated to you earlier, our cookies was quite a challenge this year. We had service units, we had troop leaders, we had service unit managers, we had cookie managers, really afraid, what are we gonna do? How are we gonna sell cookies? We wanna support the council, how are we gonna sell cookies? I will tell you that I just met with a group of women, the service unit managers and cookie managers, and we had a great meeting, talking about the cookie program, looking at things, how we wanna move forward. And so we were evaluating, we're looking at last year, we're looking at traditional ways, we're looking at new ways of possibly doing a direct sale. So you'll be hearing more about that from those service unit managers and those product program managers as the direction that we're taking and just what we're gonna do to make this the best possible cookie sale for the upcoming year. Next slide, Ashley. With that, I just wanna give you a little bit of what I shared with them when it comes to traditional sales and how we're doing with our digital sales. Now, we all know that the pandemic forced us to really do things a lot different this year and to really focus on digital this year. But trends have been showing that we've been doing very well with digital ever since 2016. But when we're doing our traditional way, we see that there has been a decline in girl selling. In 2016, we had a seventy-one percent participation rate, sixty-nine percent in 2017, sixty-three percent in 2018, fifty-nine percent in 2019, fifty-one percent in 2020, and forty-five percent in 2021. Now, I look at 2021 and I say, those maybe are not true numbers, but the trend was still going downward. You know, being in the middle of a pandemic, maybe it would have been a little bit better than forty-five percent, but it truly is, the trend was going down. But when you look at digital, you see that in 2016, we sold thirty-nine thousand packages. In 2017, forty-three thousand packages. 2018 keeps going up, fifty-six thousand packages. 2019, seventy-five thousand packages. 2020, over a hundred thousand packages. In 2021, a whopping one hundred and forty-seven thousand packages. So again, the pandemic had forced us to do things a different way and it proved to be a great thing that we should be looking at. So we discussed that with the cookie chairs and the service unit manager. Truly, we talked about how the pandemic has forced us to do things a little differently. Next slide, Ashley. The Girl Scout Experience Fund, what we are doing for our girls. I know some of you are wondering about how is the Girl Scout Experience Fund is doing. Now, we said that the proceeds from the investment of the earnings will help to underwrite the cost of girls to fulfill the Girl Scout experience. We said that the committee members will play a big role in the Girl Scout experience. We said that. When we stated the fund, when we started, I'm sorry, the fund, we had no idea, no idea. I'm saying that with lots of emphasis, we had no idea just how much attention it would need. Now, when I say that, we found out that we wanna do what's best for the girls, but when the girls are applying for these funds, they're required to pay the full amount and then they have to wait to see if they're going to get approved. And then we found out that that could be a hardship on the families. So we brought this to the attention of the Girl Scout Experience Group and they are taking a good, hard look at that, on how we can make it better, where we can work with staff together, we can still fulfill what we promised everyone and what the board promised, what the board wants to see, and how we can come together, put some guidelines in place for staff to follow and move forward with that. Again, the Girl Scout Experience Fund, the Experience Group will be meeting tomorrow night to discuss on how this is going to work. I'm gonna ask Mary to give us, just so you have an idea, just to give us a little bit of an estimate of the number of girls that have already been approved for these funds. Mary?
So in a little less than a month's time, we are looking at, there were about forty-five girls that applied to the fund for individual programs, the bulk of those were for resident camp. And that's a little over six thousand dollars that has been approved there. And then another five troops have applied for funds to offset their Camp Torquay reservation fees. So it's a grand total of about seventy-five hundred so far this month that they've approved.
Seventy-five, so you know, that is exactly what I wanna hear and that's exactly what I wanna see. I know I've spoken with many of you volunteers and I'm like, apply for the Girl Scout Experience Fund. And I want to say that, you know, Ann Houghton-Hoff, a board member is here. And I also wanted to say that we have several board members on here, as well as our chief operating officer. And you'll be hearing from Jessica in a few minutes. But I wanted to say that the Girl Scout Experience Fund Committee have been working together and Ann Houghton-Hoff, the board member that's over that committee, cannot stop saying enough great things about how you all are working together as a team to get whatever needs to be done for these girls done. And I really cannot stress how much I appreciate that. Next slide, Ashley. The next slide I wanted to share with you about the task groups and the work that this task group is doing. We actually have four task groups. And those four task groups are the policy task group, the procedure task group, the finance task group, and the communication task group. Again, the chair of this committee, Ann Houghton-Hoff, it just cannot say enough great things about the work that each of you are doing and how you are coming together to make this the best possible thing for girls. And I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I do wanna pause here for a minute if you have anything that you wanna add to what I'm saying.
I think I can just reiterate, Loretta, it's a great group to work with.
We can't hear you, Ann.
Is that her now? No. Okay. Now it picked up, okay. For some reason, it doesn't pick up in the beginning. I just wanted to reiterate what you've said, Loretta, it's a great group to work with. We're getting a lot accomplished. The groups, the task groups are meeting, there's three to four people in each task group and those task groups are meeting at times other than when the full committee meets. So it's not just, you know, one meeting a month, there's a lot of other things going on as we go through this process of setting this all up. Our goal is to have a lot more offerings by membership year 2022. So keep a lookout and we're gonna keep working. Thanks, Loretta.
Thank you, and I wanna say thank you all for all the work that you are doing, working together and getting things done for these girls. Ashley, if you go to the Camp Torquay slide. So Camp Torquay, first of all, let me just say, I wanna give, I wasn't able to be there. I was doing some work with Ameren that day and girls were delivering light bulbs to over two thousand, Girl Scouts delivering light bulbs with Ameren to over two thousand, over two thousand light bulbs to the people in the Belleville area. So I was at that and Ann Houghton-Hoff was there, as well as Steve, with all of you beautifying Camp Torquay. I wanna say a huge thank you. There was probably more than fifty, probably more than sixty people that showed up there. And I was so proud when I went there and looked at that camp and the work that you all have been doing. Truly, truly, it looks like a different camp. We just had our civil awards ceremony out there and it was just beautiful. So thank you all very much for the work that you are doing out there and using your time and how much I appreciate your time in working at the camp and making it so beautiful. I also wanna say that we have added, as you can see, we have added another archery range. And Wayne has done such a great job and yeah, I can't wait for you all to get out there and use it. I do want to ask Robin, I don't wanna put you on the spot, Robin, but I would like Robin to just give you an idea of just how many registrations she's got for Camp Torquay to date. Robin?
So we have, pretty much every weekend has someone at camp. Now, I'm not saying the whole camp is reserved, there are spots available, but they're going really quick. So we've got well over a dozen troops that already have reservations on the book. Of course, June is a lot of day camps, so that takes up day camp. But we had full camp last weekend, everybody had a great time, everybody enjoyed the new clean, beautiful, beautified camp. So yeah, it was great, but we're filling up, obviously, it's one camp. But I did wanna mention just a couple of things, if you don't mind, Loretta.
No, go ahead.
So, you know, you can go online, you can go into the website and you can see what's available and what's not available. If you're checking several weekends and you're like, gosh darn, none of my weekends are available, pick up the phone and call customer care or send us an email because we're really encouraging everyone, since it is just one camp, only reserve what you need. So don't reserve all of pumpkin patch if you have six girls and two, you know, two adults. So, but we can reach out to people. And then the same with us as staff, when we're hosting events out there, we're trying to be very careful and we just reserve what we need. But those things can change from day to day. So just because you looked on the website and the site you wanted for the weekends that you wanted were just not available, feel free to call us, we're more than happy to double check for you. We're even more than happy to reach out to see if we can kinda move things around for you. But it is booking, you know, it's filling up and like I said, June's day camps, so that pretty much takes up between setup and teardown of all the day camps that go on during the week. But there's gonna be beautiful weather, I'm sure this fall. So just make your reservations, call us, prepare if you have any questions. We want to see people out there and we will do whatever we can to make it work. We'll finagle and move things around however we can for you.
Thank you, Robert. And Robin, I understand that we had our first overnight.
Yes, this past weekend, we had overnights, yes.
So we had our first overnight. So you know, as the government lift these restrictions, we are moving right along with that, moving right into it. Of course, the Girl Scouts of Southern Illinois is gonna follow the restrictions to the best of our ability and we ask that you all do the same. But whatever is out there and they're telling us to do, that's what we're asking you all to do. So thank you, Robin, for that, it was very, 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 very good. Next slide. I wanna introduce you all to my sidekick, Jessica Upchurch. I tell you what, man, she is amazing, she works with the staff every day, she's a good trainer for the staff and she's always interested in all of the people that is under her. When it comes to those membership members, she's really into the membership, she's really into programs, she's really into adult development, she's really into everything that is under her umbrella. So I'm gonna pause here and she is definitely, will always be running these meetings with me from now on, along as finance, Amy. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jessica. Jessica, you can give us an operational date when it comes to membership program and everything else that's under you. Jessica?
Absolutely, hi, everybody. As Loretta said, I serve here as the chief operating officer and really happy to do so. I'm usually on these meetings and I don't say a lot unless Loretta calls on me, but I'm happy to share anytime you have questions, always feel free to reach out to me. Before I give the membership update you're seeing on the screen, I just wanted again to give a huge kudos to the two of the staff that have already spoken tonight, Robin Zeller, she is the director of customer experience. She's just done an outstanding job transforming our customer care team over the last couple of years from our very first migration into Salesforce and that whole process. And then just recently, our update in Salesforce and she's just undertaken a huge responsibility and I just appreciate all the work that she's done. And for Mary, I mean, leading programs in itself, she's our senior director of program engagement. And leading programs in a typical year is a challenge, a great opportunity, I should say. But this past year, running programs through a pandemic and doing things completely in a different way, I just, I owe Mary huge kudos and beyond that, just for being able to keep her team focused on serving the girls, no matter what format that's in. So just thank you to both of you that shared your face with everyone tonight. I know some people like to put a face to a name if you haven't already, so thank you for that. I wanted to give you a membership update this evening and I know Carolyn Brooks is on the line, I saw her name on there. So I'd be, I can't leave her out, she's done an incredible job keeping her whole team who focus on retention and recruitment of our girls and our adults and making sure that our community engagement team supports you the best way they could, even through a year where we were mostly virtual. So I'm just, I have a really good team and I just don't want to forget to give them kudos when I have the opportunity to do so. So I'm gonna stroll into the membership side of things first and give you an update of where we are as of yesterday for our current membership year. So from October first of 2020 till yesterday, we are serving one thousand six hundred and sixty-seven adults. Our goal for adults was two thousand two hundred and fifty-one. So we are at seventy-four percent of our adult goal for this year. In girls, we're serving four thousand eight hundred and ten girls. Our goal was six thousand one hundred and ninety-six girls for the year, putting us at seventy-eight percent. We don't typically set a separate lifetime goal, just because we're really happy when anyone decides to make that lifetime commitment to Girl Scouts. So I left it flat, so you could show that, we could show you, we are serving nine hundred and fourteen lifetime members for the membership year of 2021. And then our total, putting us at seventy-nine percent of our goal for the year, which I find is a huge win in a pandemic year where we created these goals not knowing what the year was going to look like, as we thought maybe things opened up a little bit earlier than they actually did. So just, we're celebrating that number right now, it doesn't say a hundred percent, but it's just leaps and bounds where we could have been. So just great work to the team here on staff and to the service unit managers that lead your service unit troops and all of you that are leaders that are on the line for just continuing to keep the girl at your focus, even through a really hard year personally, making sure that your girls are still being served in whichever way you can. So thank you to all of you. And then we're already, of course, into our membership year 2022. That early bird started on April first, as you all know, and it's looking quite well at the incentives this year that were picked out by our community engagement team. While I'm sure having conversations with all of you as well, I think have proved to be pretty enticing because we are looking pretty good when it comes to our early bird membership. So we're already at twenty-seven percent of our adult goal for membership year 2022. Again, that doesn't actually officially start until October of this year. So being twenty-seven percent of adults is outstanding, we're at thirty-eight percent of our traditional girl goal. And when I say traditional, I mean those are those girls that are actually participating traditionally in a troop role. Lifetime, as you can see, we've already increased our lifetime membership for next year ahead of time, putting us at forty-one percent already to our overall membership goal for membership year 2022. So outstanding work. We are really excited to actually get out there and get back into the schools to welcome new kindergarteners and other ages into the Girl Scouting experience. We cannot wait to bring those new leaders onboard. Our volunteer resources team that's led by Kelly Conley-Ameral, she already has some wonderful ideas of how to get those troop leaders engaged and trained right off the bat so that they are ready to go in the fall. With program, day camps and resident camps coming up this summer, I know that there are a few day camps that are already full. So if you're looking to get your girls involved in a day camp, get out there, get registered before they fill up. Mary, I'm gonna put you on the spot just to ask about resident camp registration. Are we seeing any filling up right now or do you have any updates that you wanna share, anything exciting about resident camp?
We have three resident camp sessions that are full. So both of the sessions at Camp Boy are full and the Camp Undeveloped Girls Week is full. The Touch Nature ones are still open. We did have to unfortunately cancel our Shawnee Adventures at Camp Undeveloped because they had an issue come up with their horses getting, I think. And so they wouldn't have enough horses for that program for us, so we did have to pull that one. But otherwise, there's still lots of openings at Touch Nature that you can sign on up for.
Thank you very much for that update. I wanted to give, so I shared with you a little bit about those teams. Our side of operations also oversee product program now as part of the program engagement team because we really want to give a focus to the program aspect of our cookie and fall product program. The reason the girls participate is to learn those business skills, those five business skills. We also have on our team the marketing and communications staff. We do have our new director, which she was introduced earlier this year, Tricia Higgins. He's doing a fantastic job just making sure we're getting out there and getting coverage of what girls are doing and sharing the Girl Scout experience with as many as we can. Our community outreach team, who are kind of wrapping up for the school year that serve girls mainly in East St. Louis, Cogia School Districts. They have been able to continually serve girls in a virtual format, which has been very fortunate for us to be able to continue to serve those partners in those areas. Excuse me, and then I wanted to give a shout out to those service units, if you're on the call, just celebrating your successes that are already over fifty percent to your individual service unit membership year 2022 goal. And that's Waterloo, East Marion, Jefferson County, Perry County, East Williamson, U-PAC, Lawrence County, North Franklin, Eastern Coles, Crawford, Jasper. And just wonderful work, already getting the word out there, getting your girls renewed so that they don't have to worry about that first step to get back into Girl Scouting in the fall. Saying that, I also know that we have some service units that are struggling because you have service. I will ask you if you're on as someone who's not part of a service unit team and you're interested in serving at the service unit and in those leadership positions, reach out to your service unit manager, your community engagement manager, us through customer care, so that we can help find a good fit for you, your team out there that's working to support you. I'm sure we'll welcome you in with open arms so that we can help you get onboard one of those service unit teams. Anyone else who's on the call, even if you're part of that group that I said was over fifty percent to their goal for NY22, if you're looking for a place to volunteer or you're looking for some additional support and you're not sure where to find it, when it comes to Girl Scouting, give us a call, that's what we're here for. And we don't know your struggles or their opportunities until you bring them to us. So let us continue to support you in the ways that you need it. And just another update about troop finances. Troop finance reports went out through LISO over the last week. If you or someone that you work with in Girl Scouting should have received a LISO. If you or someone that you work with in Girl Scouting should have received a Liscio invitation to complete the troop finance report, but you have not. Please contact customer care. They will get that to me and I will push an invite back out to you. I think that's all I have. I feel like I, I shared a lot this evening. So it's great to see you all on and I look forward to talking to you soon.
All right. So thank you so much, Jessica. Like I said, Jessica's worked, she worked very, very hard every, every week. We, we have a conversation on how things are going and the, I, just, just the morale and, and, and the staff. She's doing a great job with that. I kind of also want to touch base. I, I, I know we have some questions and I, and I want to get to those questions. But I also wanted to touch base with you all to talk a little bit more about membership. In a, in a, in a year, a pandemic year. Every once in a while, once a month, all CEOs, all hundred and eleven CEOs from all over the country, I meant from all over the US. Talk and, 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 and we talk about how our membership is looking. This has been a very, very trying year. For, for, for all of us when it comes to, when it comes to membership. So to be at eighty percent of where we are. We are going to be, our charter will be looked at. We feel that we have met all of the requirements for the charter. But we were a little concerned about membership. And so they put my mind at ease saying, we're all in the same boat. So when it comes to your, your charter, that's not going to be a huge factor. What, what, what's going to be a huge factor in your council, Loretta, is going to be your finances. Well, I gave you the numbers for the finances. So I am banking on a three-year charter. Right now, we have a one year. And I, I really feel like the next time I were reporting to you guys, I'm going to be letting you know that we have a three-year charter. That's because of all the sacrifices that you all have done and working together, all of us working together to make things better. I also want to talk. I talked a little bit about cookies, but I also want to say, you know, just what cookies did, what happened with cookies in a year of a pandemic. Not just in our council, but all over. It's a very trying year. I knew it was going to be. Before we did our revised budget to the board, we looked at where we think that cookies was going to be. Before the cookies came in. The, and we looked at it and we thought, we're only going to make in the sixty percent of, of what we put in our budget. So that was going to require me going back to the board saying, hey, this is where we're going to, we're going to be. But then I said, I wanted to have a town hall meeting with all of the service unit managers and cookie managers. And I did just that. And, and on January, I think it was January 11th last year, we came together. You told me your fears. You told me what you were worried about. But we put our best foot forward. And, you know, thinking that we were going to be at in the sixty percent. Right now, we're well over seventy-five percent. Now. Let me say that most councils are in that sixty, fifty percent. So, and, and then these are councils that never had any problems with cookies, never had any problems with anything. So I, I wanted to say that could not have happened if I did not have that meeting with those service unit managers and those cookie managers and strategizing and looking at things. So a huge, huge thank you to those, those, the ones that were on that call and, and, and worked with me to make the right decisions for this council. We are seventy-five percent. There is, you, you could see it all in the news. It's all over the place. One council with, stuck with seven hundred and twenty thousand packages. That's more than what we put in our budget. You know, so it's, it's very hurtful. So I'm very proud of, of the work that you all have done and working with these girls in the middle of a pandemic. It just shows resilience and nothing stops Girl Scouts. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And thank you again for all the work that you've done. Before I go into questions and answers, we do have one board member I want to recognize then to see if she has anything to say. Anne Houghton-Hoff, is there any other board members here tonight that would, I, I want to pause and give you a moment if you'd like to say something? Any other board members? I think we have Jim S umbrella. We have Anne Houghton-Hoff. Jim, you don't have anything to say? No, he said no. Okay. And Anne, I think you said what you needed to say.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. So again, a huge huge thank you. I, I, I see lots of staff on here, lots of volunteers. Thank you all for your support. Amy, thanks for those fresh numbers at thirty-three, three months of, of reserves. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Volunteers like to hear that. I do have a hand up. Let me see whose hand that is up. Mary Ann, Mary Ann, the floor is yours. No, your hand's not up. Okay. Someone wanted to know something about cookies. I saw that in the chat earlier. What was it? Who was that?
It was Susan Hyde Wecksel. I just wanted to know, I know, membership. Across the nation in youth activities has been on a decline. And we've had trouble with cookie sales on a decline. Are those declining proportionally? You know, at roughly the same rate? And is that what we're looking at? The lack of membership to do the selling? Or is one decreasing more than the other?
Well, membership drives everything, Susan. And, and yes, it plays a big part in our cookie sale. When we don't have girls out there selling, then we have to depend on the girls that are selling for their, their. Ratio to be even higher, like their, their per girl average to be even higher. The more girls we have out there that are members and that are selling, a lot of times we have girls. That are, are members of our council, but they may not be selling. So we want every girl to get that, that those five skills that the cookie program teaches them. And we want every girl to, to be selling cookies. So it's a little bit of both. You know, when you have a decline in membership, it's automatically going to be a decline in, in, in cookies.
Right. I just wanted to know if the slope of the cookie decline was sleep steeper than our membership decline or were they pretty proportional? Because that means the girls that we have that are selling cookies over all. The girls that are, are registered and are members. They are selling less instead of just. Cookie sales decreasing because membership is decreasing. If that makes sense?
Yes, yes. I would say the girls sold more cookies. And I don't know if Kristen is on here, Jessica's Kristen on here. Maybe she can.
She is not, Loretta. It's Mary.
Mary, you want to, you want to talk a little bit about that?
I know, I don't have all of the numbers, but I know that the per girl average did go up this year. So.
Okay. So our girls that are, are registered and active are hustling. They're doing their share and some. So it's not just. That the girls that are, are registered are becoming more apathetic and going, oh, well, and just not selling. It's just our, our girls doing it.
Our percent participation did go down a little bit. Let me see.
Hey, Mary.
There was in, there was a hundred and, let's see. In FY twenty twenty, there was eighty-one percent participation. And in twenty-one, there was seventy-two percent participation. So it did go down a little bit, but our per girl average in turn went up then from one forty-one to one sixty-four.
And, and Susan, like you said, the girls that are out there selling, they are hustling. Just you, 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 you put the hammer on the nail. They are selling. So it's just a proven fact. And a lot of the girls didn't sell because parents were concerned with this pandemic. So, you know, I, I, I'm looking for a, a, a much better year next year with this cookie group that we're working with. And, and we'll see what happens. But the girls are not stopping. Those skills that they learn in Girl Scouting, they do it the best. You volunteers are doing a great job with these girls when it comes to the five skills that they are learning in, in, in that cookie program. So the girls aren't slacking up. I want to make that clear. They, the ones that are out there selling are selling and they are selling well.
Okay. That was, that was my question. You know, if they were both decreasing at about the same rate, then it's just purely about numbers of membership. But if cookie sales was decreasing at a little quicker rate. Then it would be, even though our membership has decreased, the girls that we had were selling less. But that's not what I'm hearing. I'm hearing that they're actually. Headed toward each other. Membership has been decreasing a little bit, but product sales per, per members that are still participating. Actually ramped up a little bit to kind of pull up the slack.
Absolutely. And like Mary said, I, I don't know what our per girl average was last year, but it went up quite a bit this year. Quite a bit. So Susan, thank you for that. The answer, is there any other questions? Now's the time. I mean, you all have the floor right now. I, I just want to say, if I don't have any more. I, I, I'm, I'm so excited and so happy. I, every time I speak to people, I have to always say how proud I am to be the CEO of the Girl Scouts of Southern Illinois. And that's because of the work that these girls do. I was, myself and Anne Houghton-Hoff gave out the girls of Gold Award and Civil Awards. And some of these things that these girls are doing is just amazing, amazing work that they're doing. And this is why I'm able to say tomorrow, I have to speak in Fairview Heights somewhere to talk, talk to. What, what is the group? Actually, I can't, I don't even know the group that I'm speaking to.
The Rotary Club in.
The Rotary Club, okay, in Fairview Heights. And I'm going to let them know just how proud I am to be the CEO of the Girl Scouts of Southern Illinois. And then I'm going to share with them what these girls have been doing. To make the world a better place. Girls that during the middle of a pandemic, make sure they took care. Of all of those first responders, those police officers, those hospital personnel. Those grocery store workers and even being socially distanced, took care of the, the, the men and women in nursing homes. You know, they gathered diapers and, and took to a nursing, to, to a nursery. So. Wow, wow. These girls are doing amazing jobs. And, and that's because of all of you. They couldn't do what they do without you. So I want to say thank you all for being the wind beneath my wings. Because you all are doing amazing job. With that, we don't have anything else. I, I will say that I will have another meeting to let you know how, how things going. Whenever we need to, whether it's in the fall, maybe even sooner. I can't wait to tell you guys, we got that three-year charter. And, and, and I got to say this, we have to get that three-year charter. I don't want anything less than a three-year charter. So as soon as I found out, when I should find out. Sometime in August, I'll be letting you know. Oh, we did have one more board member I see. Paula, Paula, are you there? Say hi, Paula. So I want to invite you all. We're going to have our virtual gala. And, and August the sixth. So if you haven't seen that yet, check it out on the website. Get involved with that. We, we still need everybody's support for everything that we're doing. And together we make a difference in the lives of girls. So thank you again. And with that, a good night to all of you.
Thank you, Loretta.
Thanks, Loretta.
Thank you.